Next item on the agenda is... Is this an agenda to see everything that we can do? Would you move this on agenda?
I do not.
And I do not either.
Mr. Gaber?
Yeah? Oh, we don't...
No, no, no.
Yeah.
Thank you.
A regular clerk is having a new need put in there. So we have to fill in, which is... We're just glad to have her here. Okay, next item is public comment. We do have a couple of zoning hearings after that. But right now, we'll open this up for public comment. The way we do this is if you have a comment, you come up to the podium and tell us what you want to talk about.
Name and address.
Say your name and address. And unless we get a situation where everybody's just saying the same thing time and time again, you can all speak. But I certainly would prefer... I'm not going to sit here and listen to the same thing 10 times. I can tell you that right now. So just don't... If you're saying... If you have something, a person before you has already said it, just touch your sound on what you have to... So if you would raise your hand, who wants to come first? Yes, sir.
Can we do this together?
Sure. If it's okay with everybody in the room. Sure.
Yeah. Thank you.
My name is William Shaw Price. My wife and I can... Can we go over 5554 Spring Boston Drive, right across from HVO?
Mary Ellen Baldwin, 5525 Spring Boston Drive.
Georgia Zachary, 5505 Spring Boston Drive.
We're sort of representing most of the people on the road. We're sort of talking and doing the ladies around everyone and stuff like that. And we're concerned about the safety of that intersection. The State Highway 48, now our main road, which is Spring Boston Drive. One of the police officers was involved in an accident a few weeks ago. And we've been... The group has been pretty vocal with the HVO. You know, it's... And the question is they provide some solutions to the people going in and coming out. They do have an exit, and it's supposed to pretty well as far as the exit is down the hill below the drive. The entrance, however, is on the top of the hill. In the past, they had two fairly large areas that you could both go in. But we had people coming out, people going in. And they don't seem to think that that is a private drive. If we live on a township drive, it's a state highway there. We signal, and they just ignore it. They just pull out. So that was one concern. Another concern is just for us, he may would get out and get back in because of the traffic. It's pretty heavy. The speed limit through that area is 50 miles. The officer stated he felt he was traveling a little bit too fast, but he was within the speed limit. He was actually under the speed limit when the accident occurred. It's just a busy intersection. Whenever they have a specialty net, but with weekends, it becomes very crowded. Now, we went over and talked to them. Mary Ellen went over a couple of times, her and her husband, too. And we've joined them a lot of times going over there. I can't remember a few of those areas. And we voiced our concern, and they said, yeah, they would... They could put up signs, they could paint arrows in the driveway, you know, saying, here's the entrance way, you can mark it as such. And then later on, they told us they couldn't do that because there was concern about confusion on the people coming in. I don't know how you get confusion on a sign that says entrance. Big arrow, white arrow, it's going to be on a black dot. But they said they wouldn't... They couldn't do that. So I noticed that the rodeo, which is on 73rd, they don't have near the traffic problems going in and out there. There's D and Bs right across the road. They have much better signs to identify entrance and exits. So even that would improve it some there. But we feel that we need to voice this concern because eventually, there's going to be more people involved in accidents and hoping none of them gets hurt. But there's a chance of some that could get injured there. So that's the reason why we bring that up because these... They could possibly influence HVO to do something. It's their private property. Putting up a light there may solve a blinky light. However, nobody will pay too much attention to a blinky light. And if you put a speed limit, it would slow people down. That means when they're shut down or during the winter, you still have people going slow, which very seldom happens, but it's a sign. So which is... I'm voicing my concern. I don't know if Mary Ellen wants to add to that.
Well, as you can see from the papers, this goes back to 2019 when we started communicating with them about how dangerous the situation was. And when we met with them in March, we gave them this piece of paper, suggestions that we thought might help. What they sent on September 20th to Mrs. Shaw Price was that they could not put arrows on the pavement as it would cause confusion and have people start passing that they were turning in. We do have directional signs asking people to exit off the south entrance. As far as I know, there's only one sign at the south entrance. People don't pay any attention. So spring blocks in the street, and HVO's main driveway is here. People come out here. September 8th, we had a near miss. We had one a couple of years before then.
We've got...
Do you have that?
Yes, can. Spring block, it is. It's traffic, depending on which way you go.
They're trying to get out as cars are going. What they had before they asked them, that the police officer was that main entrance and another entrance? A couple of years ago, I said, why don't you put a lollipop or something as a barrier there? No, can't do that. That's just all in the notes that we gave. Hire policemen when they have these events. They've had big events last few weekends, and the traffic is horrendous. They were, no, you can't hire a policeman, there's nobody available. Something has to be done before somebody really gets hurt. That accident in September was fortunate that nobody was really hurt from what we understand from the police system. Spencer has other concerns?
Yeah, well, that's my second thought. But for me, it's the noise. Because there's... On the weekends, they have bands, which I'm not opposed to. But they play till 9:30 or so. And I sleep with earbuds and a band going. And I could still hear the noise in my bedroom. Just it's... It's getting loud, I feel. So it's very disruptive. Some of us go to bed early. To me, the noise on the weekends is my biggest concern.
Exactly. When three houses in...
Three houses in.
And even four houses in, you can hear the noise. You know, I didn't even hear that sign at the beginning. And you could hear it back through the door?
Yeah. We both do. We're the good house.
It depends on the band, but...
Yeah.
But, you know, some of them are just...
If anyone from HVO, the owners, say anything about, well, this all goes back to the road license, it has nothing to do with the application of running road licenses. Most of the people I've talked to, they could care less if they have a work permit or not. I would say the majority of the people coming in haven't had a green certificate.
The other concern was the parking on spring blocks. Again, you realize it's a public street. However, it's not a wide street. So if they're parking from the corner and they get parked on pieces long all the way down, you're not going to get an emergency vehicle down. Last year, there was... There was an argument with her husband and somebody who parked in front of a mailbox, which is no equal to block a mailbox. Public street, I park where I want. But the main issue, I think, is the traffic and the hazardous conditions on 48. I reached out to Scott with... He promised to come. He said, now he's saying, well, this is public roads, can't do anything about it. Something has to be done. We don't want the HVO to fail. We enjoyed our times there. But they say they put signs on... Or notices on their social media. I haven't seen anything. They have a whole list of events. There's nothing about don't park on that street. Be careful, make sure you use the S pension directive.
Most people don't really belong to any social media type Twitter. It's just after X, I guess it's called.
What?
So if you went out there, you'd say, well, I have to try to figure out. Quick is in it, look at sound. And if you happen to see a car coming out the entrance, you think, well, I guess you can read that.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll take your comments into consideration. And I... I'm sure... I'm not sure. Has the county engineer been out there?
He's been out there. My... And actually, Scott reached out to me directly, and we're going to meet with the county engineer to discuss further with what we can do with the road itself. Understanding to your suggestion about flashing lights and changing speed limit is something that's done at that state level that we have. It's... We requested it on numerous occasions, and it just, yeah, it happens.
We can't do that. But we can then ask them to do studies and...
Yeah. We can ask for some of that. Which will give them the data they need, whether it be to reduce the speed limit or whatever else that they could do to mitigate it.
I don't think reducing the speed is going to help people getting in and out. Or near collisions of people...
Understood.
Maybe.
I know.
And I spoke to him back in... I think the first time that Scott told me he was going to do something, I told him, and he said... I don't know why he said I could help, I can't help. So I don't know.
Well, he can give us some guidance. That's generally done.
I know Scott...
He's the county engineer. He can help.
He can help. Well, he can help. Well, I believe he can.
Yes.
And so... Jason, you guys get together. Don't let me know.
I will.
I can be there, too.
Yeah.
There's got to be something out there that's reasonable, that's not going to cost the state or the county a million dollars that we could do something out there. Now, I don't know that that's true. But we ought to be able... We can investigate it and see what we can do.
Police should be the best. Somebody directing traffic that could let spring blocks them out and make sure no one enters that entrance.
Well, there's a problem with that. The question needs to be paid, not to save the road. So...
I want to help a politician or policeman in peril. On a state highway of 55 miles, that would be a little... That would be a bit of a concern.
So I'm understanding that, but it's not a thing that's safe.
Buying the HVO parking lot. And they try to come up this way to go out. One way only, you know, and no exit. Something.
The rodeo, like I said, they have beautiful, nice, good...
They're not a good one. That's not really a fair... Just to be frank, it's not really a fair comparison because the line of sight coming in and out of there is a mile and a way. That's what becomes a bigger challenge there. I mean, I grew up at Ed Valley, so I understand the concerns. We go there now as well. They... To my knowledge, they expanded the parking.
Oh, yeah.
There were signs when I left, each row of the parking sending us left to the exit. So, I mean, I feel like that they're making efforts. It's just a matter of a situation where... We have this happen. I live next to a... On a hayride I used to live, or used to be. Now it's a letting venue. Well, they were concerned about that entrance and exit. In 125 years, there's never been issues. But there's a line of sight challenge. So it's just a matter of how do we mitigate it? Well, in that case, we're also trying to look into reducing the speed limit because that does give reaction time a lot better opportunity. So I feel like that might be a step in the right direction. Although, I guess, in fact, they're only open six months a year except for private events. So I understand. The rest of the time, are they going to obey it? Well, that's what part of our job, so...
The property doesn't have a problem because of the mass of people.
Right.
Well, we will...
I revisited Mr. Lips Friday again, so... I'm a public servant, he's a politician. It's just...
Yeah.
I like Scott. But we'll get to the bottom of it.
Kind of a loose politician.
Neil can contribute to it. He can give us some counsel and direction.
And, yeah. He has other people down there that can help with specialties.
Correct.
I think that's... They have some abilities to help us, I believe, for sure.
How about those bike strips that they use in airports? One way or we can't get out. I'm tired.
Think a little with that.
All right. Thank you.
That would be okay from a power point of view.
Yeah.
Take care, Tori.
Yeah. Matthew, we've got their names and phone numbers, so...
But their names and addresses.
Names and addresses. Yes, sir.
Hello? My name is Sean Warren, and I live at 5498 Spring Boston Drive. I can't speak on the traffic as it hasn't been an issue for us. It's my wife and our child. It hasn't been an issue. If it is, we usually just go down Bono Hill. We avoid that intersection altogether. But like I said, I don't think we've had much of an issue with that intersection. As for the parking on the road, it was... Granted, last year it was a little nuts. But the owners gave us signs that say official, no HVO, no parking signs, that I put up Friday and Saturday, and it has mitigated 99% of the people parking down our road. It...
And that worked, didn't it?
Correct. Yeah, it absolutely worked. And as for the noise, there is a noise issue, but we will... What we usually do is contact Robin and say, hey, you know, there is an issue. Yeah, turn it down, please. It's just the bass. The music doesn't bother us at all. It's the bass that I can feel in my bedroom. But as soon as we text her, half hour, it's done. That's it. So I was just going to give them some credit.
So the signs you put in your yard actually have worked?
Absolutely. And I know they've added more parking. We've... We had, I don't think anybody this season, or this, I guess, their busy season, park on our street.
Very few, or...
Yeah.
Very few compared to what you had in...
Correct. Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Anybody else like to say anything? Well, we appreciate your comments, and we will get back with you and probably the three people that were up here and as your kind of spokespeople and get back with you after we meet with the county engineer and Scott Lips and... We probably can get Sweet Wolf to down there, too.
Okay.
He's on some finance committees that Scott's not. So that may be a benefit if we can get him out there. He's pretty accessible. Okay. Thank you all very much. You're all welcome to stay. We can further move. We are... We do have some public hearing scheduled. And I don't think the individuals for our first meeting are here, first public hearing.
Correct. So if we could flip those, and then if they're not available, we'll then have another discussion.
Okay. So now, we're going to move to on the agenda to kind of special activities, public hearing, G, as in MOP and Resolution 5460, approving MOP, denying the zone change request for Darren Heath Ficker to amend design map doing resolution map for total 8.0 acres from Township Resonant TR1 to R1 and dispense with section 3. Jeffrey?
Okay, so on our screen, we're going to look at some slides on the top. So a lot of five points of north of our location. We're looking at this hatched area on the north outside the church somewhere. So the location being specified to be 8664 St. Row 48, parcel number 05262004. On African States, a request to rezoning from TR1 to R1 for following reasons. When I purchased the property, it was zoned R1. Never received a notice of rezoning from R1 to TR1. Property included pond approximately 1.0 acres. Let's look to the next slide, you can see the plot. The signs located in the personal and at Constable Creek, 12 to 20 feet wide, located north boundary of property. Building current in my house in 1988, 1988, a board was located 20 foot side yard setbacks 10 feet, both new barns and setbacks of 12 foot 7 inches, which squared with 10 foot setback to R1. Additional partial borders on three sides of the site of property, this property, which is also owned by the applicant, New Shear Common Drive. So the reason we're here for zoning, same point, is that ultimately, we want to go from zoning classification of TR1, which has an acre and a half minimum lot size with 25 foot side yard setbacks to R1, which is an acre and 10 foot. And the applicant came forth, spoke with him earlier in the year, talked about options. He actually made his first in the middle with a 10-foot side yard setback for the structure. And I'm learning of zoning classifications. We had a discussion, what path do I go down? Is it a variance request? Is it a request for a zone change? Ultimately, started off the process with the board of zoning appeals asking for reduction in side yard setback. So on March 20, 2023, case 22BDA01 was approved, which reduced the side yard setback from 25 feet to 17 feet. Commitment was issued when we went out to inspect it. Commitment found that the side yard setback was reduced to 12 foot 7 inches, so there was a area in the field measured. So he asked for another variance for four design appeals. That case was 22BDA006, and on July 12th to July 11th of 2023, this case was denied. So we have a structure that doesn't do setbacks, so we're back to one of the first options we discussed, which is a different zoning classification, so you can leave required setbacks. So let's look at what the different zoning classifications are. On some north, we have a TR1, an R1, and an R1 PD. On some east, we have TR1. To the south, we have R1. And to the west, we have R1, and then split classification 31. With lane disclaims, see where opportunities exist. This is map four, which identifies properties outside the cemetery and cemetery area. Map six shows the properties located on the principal arterial road, urban road classification. Map 10 shows, we went through the planning area discussion. This was in the planning area two, which was the middle belt combined. Existing development are committed developments representing more than 70% of the area. And density of 1 to 3 acre lots, using onsite treatment. So we'll head into the final map, which is map 11, decide what color it should be and what classification. Residential went into green, the mint green, and the butter color. This is in the mint green, so the transition between the cemetery sewer would exist and the cemetery sewer would not exist. Ultimately, it's split for one county regional plan. They recommended approval of the rezoning from TR1 to R1. And it's split for one county, for the zoning commission. I can answer one county. They made a recommendation to approve based upon being a lane disclaim and a community residential, placing the property backs to the 2005 and the classifications to pre-classification. Special performance of setbacks for the R1 and that the zoning was logical appropriate fair and full act. So first time we've put all those words together for a rezoning.
So with that, I can answer questions of...
And Mr. Flipster. You might have any questions?
I don't.
Those are straightforward, man. Yep. Did you have the act here? Would you all like to say anything?
Yeah, I have my own... I'm sorry.
Page your name and address.
It's like... 8616 St. Row 48. I think it might be under favor of Darren. First time I go around my middle name, so if I ask for Darren, I probably won't answer you. Um, my brother's been representing me through this whole thing. My in-laws, I'm in and out of town with them, with my wife, so I don't know from one day to the next day if I'm going to be here or not. So I'm just going to let him go. I'll come back down if there's any questions, I'll go ahead and answer them.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Give everyone else attendance. My name is Ross Ficker, St. Badrens. One of the distinctions, and I think one of the holdups or concerns that the trustees or township has is regard to the density of the possibility on this parcel. This parcel is just over eight acres. Under a TR classification, there would be up to five homes possible to be built on that property. One and a half per acre per house, okay? Under the R classification, there would be up to eight properties, eight houses that could possibly be built. There was basically one house, my brother's, on this property. So that would be seven additional possible ones or four additional possible ones, depending on which we choose. First of all, might I go over here? This is R1 here. This is R1 here, which is dead center of his property. R1 to the south, R1 across the street. I understand this, which is all the cemetery, and this parcel here is also owned by the cemetery. So that's the reason for that being TR1. Other slide. Now, what those classifications don't consider is the surroundings or ground of there. One plus acre pond in the middle. The driveway, common driveway for not only this property, but for this one, comes through this property down through here with a parking area here. This parking area is 24 feet off this property line, okay? Comes back here. First barn, house, second barn. Along the north side, there's a creek with a seven-foot diameter culvert underneath St. Row 48. The state installed that culvert, and if they determined that a seven-foot culvert was necessary, can you imagine how much water flow would be flowing underneath there most of the time? There's also a feeder stream running through here, back... Or in front of it, no, through here, excuse me, feeding that creek, if I'm calling it. The pond is slightly over an acre. There are two feeder streams coming to the pond, one off here, one off the back. There's an overflow from the pond coming off the north side to the creek. There's also a swale running right down through here. That's the reason the second barn was not in addition to the first barn, but because it had been flowing 24/24/7. He didn't want to divert the neighbor's water coming across here and change, create problems. Now, I said that under TR1, possible five additions or five homes total. Under R1, possible eight homes total for that parcel. The facts are this. My background and his background, we used to own the largest restoration construction company in southwest Ohio, developers, A.E. Fickers, if you've not heard the name, okay? So we know what it takes to do, build a house the proper way, how much yard is required, and the construction needed to build that. Looking at this parcel, there's basically one spot in addition to the existing home that a house could be built, and that's here in this corner. That puts one more property, one more house on this parcel. This has a grade off, there's a feeder coming back here, like I stated, and this has a large drop-off to the creek running down through here. The truth of the matter is... The truth of the matter is...
You don't really need to keep going. You, you don't really need to keep one of those. I'm not saying you're wasting your time, but, um, I haven't talked to Jason, but, you know, I am certainly in favor of what you're asking. And my guess is that if these people were here too, I don't know if you have any comments about it.
Not considering the.
I think they're on the other case.
Anyway, and, um, I appreciate your presentation, and it makes, what you asked will make some space.
Thank you, it's cut me short.
You're on a roll.
Doing a great job.
Yeah. No, it's a capable problem.
One of the four spots. I'm sure it'll stay like that for a long time.
Are there fish in that pond?
I've got deer.
Yeah.
Got a den of fox. I've got two owls that are in the woods. And it's, it's without saying, it's paradise stuff, my wife and I. It's paradise.
Absolutely.
I got one too.
Do you?
Yep.
Wife.
Paradise, so I guess I got everything I need.
Thank you.
Thank you. If, uh, any other comments, Jeff, do you have anything?
I, I do not.
At this time, I'd like to motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yay.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. And I'm not sure that we ever, the week that I, did we vote to recess that?
Oh, yeah, but we can vote on this one and then go back into.
Go back to.
Yeah, go back in the other, we, yeah, well.
All right, with the public hearing being closed, we're waiting for the regular meeting. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve, modify, or deny a dischange.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And dispense with the second reading, and I say.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. I know there's a, Jeff's probably talked about there's a waiting period in case some of my files, uh.
Referendum.
Referendum.
Yeah.
Been here for a long time, and they're gonna finally referendums, and I wouldn't thank for your case anybody who's worried about.
So thank you all very much. I can't, Jeff, question you, give me.
Okay, now, let's go back to resolutions fifty-four, fifty-nine, and.
What we could do, sir, is we could open the public hearing, and we could keep it in the process. And that way, we would hold the.
Give them a chance to. Give them a chance to come back.
Correct. Because I'm not exactly sure why they're not present, um, not well.
I was gonna ask you, do they, maybe they don't believe they're, they don't have any impact on the outcome? Do you think that's it?
I don't know, I have not had any contact with them since the last hearing, um, but I've talked with them. I had sent them their notification of this meeting, um, but I'll reach back out. Let me take this meeting and the next and see if they wanted to do a modification if they're asking for denial or, excuse me, removal. But any action seeking without them is probably not appropriate, seeing how they're part of it.
Okay, is there a motion to recess the regular meeting and open up the, open up the public hearing for resolution fifty-four, fifty-nine?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. And with the act not being here, we'll put this on, uh.
November the thirteenth is in the table and process.
Table and process. Okay, so is there a motion to put this on the table and process on November thirteenth?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
I would say if they don't show up again, then we will go back. We've given them notice in thirty days, correct?
Come on. The law director should have said yes, so.
All right.
So we'll send out additional mailers to you all. Thank you for coming, sir.
So, may I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I live around.
Close.
I live here. Here?
Yep.
And you guys live right here. This is right.
Will you please identify yourself?
I'm Roger Christian, twelve gen record. Gina and Jerome Stewart. So this is the property question, right, to zone it for repairing cars, autos, it was already denied, right? So that was very clear, so why, how, why are you opening up for another discussion?
Okay, I, I.
Just my question.
It's, it's public process, so you do a zoning change, there's an application, it goes to one county regional planning for a non-binding recommendation. The first step in the process is a zoning commission, who are volunteers that are appointed by the trustees to review the request. They made a binding recommendation of trustees, the trustees then hold their public hearing, which is this evening. They make final action, so as part of, by nineteen twelve, the higher life code, it is two public hearing process. Chris, I got it, okay? I don't know about you, but we came to.
Oh, well, I came to the last meeting and spoke again.
Okay, just for.
For the clear credit, yeah.
You gotta change.
No, no, the zoning, by, by steps or process, or the zoning commission is only a recommendation, and this, this is the final body. So it's just, the zoning, it has to go through the zoning evaluation process, but at the end of the day, the trustees have to vote on that recommendation, and they can approve it, deny it, or modify it. So that's just the state law process, we don't.
No, no, thank you.
We're just part. No, no, I just wanted you to understand that we're not, we're not putting you or anybody else through any hearings that are wasting time to do it, because generally, we definitely have to.
Happy to show up, but there are final changes.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the question.
Yeah, very good. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. Okay, now, we can, we are reconvening the regular meeting and moving on to fiscal business. We have a fiscal officer. We have, they have, thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Uh, we have received all the paperwork, and, uh, so I think, uh, I'd like you to look into that. Lay my mind, I.
Let's do it.
I'm like, I'm looking at you.
We'll move on to, uh, resolution fifty-four sixty-one, resolution approving supplemental appropriations to, to the permanent budget appropriation for fiscal, fiscal year twenty twenty-three and dispense with the second reading.
So yes, there's two primary reasons why we're receiving supplemental to our appropriations, largest of which is, uh, we are prepared to break ground on station twenty-four, and there will be some invoices generated due to that construction, and probably be payable before the end of this year. We did not appropriate any funds for the construction of twenty-four, uh, twenty-four, uh, twenty-three appropriate, I said twenty-four. Station twenty-four in the twenty twenty-three appropriations, we need to do so. And some of the other funds for the fire fund, and the other one is for adding for the interest that they're on investment. And Russ asked me to, uh, note for the board that, uh, his practice of, our practice of asking for advances from the county for our expected collection. Twenty-three alone, uh, it earned an extra hundred thousand dollars in interest. Maybe it's transferred through other funds for which they are collected, so, uh, it's prudent to do that. Uh, he wanted to make sure the board knew that, uh, it was very beneficial to us to give those collections before they're, they're actually dispersed, and that's why he asked me for advances, makes a difference. With that, I present the updated supplemental appropriation.
So with that, does he have any questions?
I just can't wait for Russ to get back, because he's a lot better explaining that than that.
Wow, I did that for a week.
I was gonna make you do it over, but that's okay, we can move forward.
This is our motion to approve fifty-four sixty-one and dispense with the second reading.
So moved.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
And then we have resolution fifty-four sixty-two, a resolution approving the transfer of, uh, the general fund to other funds in amount equal to the investment income generated by those funds for the third quarter and dispense with the second reading. What?
Yeah, you've already covered that.
That's the first twenty thousand.
Yeah. Nothing we can ask for, I'm sure, too.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. Then we have fifty-four sixty-three, a resolution approving the transfer of general funds appropriations to a part, or part of general fund, transfer out of the permanent budget appropriation for fiscal year twenty twenty-three and dispense with the second reading.
Conterminist agreement inside Miller's due to the city, moving to the transfer out, to be able to move it to the file line. How's that?
Better. You're getting there.
Is there a motion to approve fifty-four sixty-four?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. Okay, anything else under fiscal business? I think I spoke quite enough fairly.
I just don't want there ever to be a meeting where we don't laugh at some point. Sometimes it's each other, and there's other stuff.
I agree. Let's move on to new business and planning and zoning, resolution fifty-four sixty-four, resolution determining the maintenance after twenty-nine, uh, eighty-five, the state government, and the constitutions of the business for removal of three and removal of, uh, vehicles and sufficient, after sufficient notice, dispense and dispense it with the second reading.
Yes, sir, so we've been dealing with this for, well, through this year, and got very close, but then we had some slowdowns. Ultimately, what still remains as of today is a vehicle and a piece of H V A C equipment. So movement was made since last week when I submitted, but I'd still like to go ahead if your desire to put it forth. See, means, realize it's not as the emergency gets a little bit more time, if need be, but still hold to the decision that, A, if we don't have it, we're gonna take it to the trustees and go forward, so.
Yeah, I think that's all there's time to do, I'm sure, in two days.
Yeah.
Good.
Is there a motion to approve fifty-four sixty-four?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. Anything else?
Mr. Wade, if you can move on, if it's okay with, with the board, what I will do is, on these emergency resolutions, I will simply line out and declare an emergency, and also line out the emergency clause, because we don't have three trustees today. That's okay, and just for the record, everybody will know, and I'll, I'll abbreviate with my B E P, everybody know what happened.
That sounds great. Okay, please, Sean, anything else, Sean?
That'll work. Last meeting was by the, it's.
Is that where?
Yeah.
Yes, they're making some like. There was a message.
Sure was.
Maybe that way you used to discuss.
Personal nature.
Yes. And then, and then this way you can get away with it. Or try. It's, I'm more of a weekly.
Yeah, they got a lot of work done with that.
Hey, she, uh. Just make sure. Does it have been, uh?
You have any good time?
I have, I have grass growing.
It looks nice, huh? Did it go through there yesterday?
I'll be anxious to see the lady, where's it, where you had to put a lot of, what she thinks about next spring, when she can actually move it. She would, one would think she would be happy.
One would think.
It'll be interesting.
Not her background. Sure does look nice there, though.
It looks very nice. Thank goodness we got.
Where are we with pickleball? We done?
We, uh, got it paved, and we're waiting for the asphalt to put secure.
The thirty days or something, that's what they said.
We gotta make sure that doesn't get too cold, so we're on up against it, but they're gonna try to get it strapped and sealed.
Ross and Missouri tonight.
And I wanted to thank Ryan and Tony, too. They all punched topsoil in there and.
Yeah.
Made a real nice dredge roll drop, it looks terrific.
Great, thank you. Good job. I mean, I get texts every day, but. I guess I'm a Florida, I play pickleball. She said.
Tennis courts are straight for pickleball, so they can use those.
Yeah, well, I just.
You know, they hate it, the tennis players hate them on.
Yeah, I, I'm, it needs to be something.
When you get to the terminal, you let me know, I'm, I'm coming out there.
Well, you gotta be able to see first.
Well, that's what we call the donut open.
Well, you have mine behind you, so it's fine.
Sure. I, I like.
They are.
They have all the concerns, you're a lot of drama, right? It's, you know, you don't have to listen to those people, it's just not.
I don't know what about trials.
What do they know?
For the record, I have permission. It's been cleared.
We are home rule here, though.
Yeah, that's true, that is true.
Women of the law, now.
That's right.
Matt, do you have anything under the definition or? Uh, anything under, anything in the house under new business that is not, is there a motion to approve that considered, yeah?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah. Staff updates.
Somebody wants to hear me talk.
No, don't, it's, don't get an attitude.
I'm not getting attitude.
I just, it, it just felt cumbersome that he talked about that.
Well, I'm good, we don't want to hear you talk.
Matter of fact.
Okay.
So moved.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pray for Israel and pray for Steve.
Yes.
Yeah.